Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manashe County Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tomgroudi.
Here.
Alderman Tedgroudi.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments in any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak now, you could come up to the microphone and state your name and address. No? No one? We'll move on to Item F, Report of Department Head Staff Consultants. And the first item is the housing renovation program, and Director Schrader is here to speak about that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So over the last couple of months, I think city staff has hinted this to the common council that we are looking at a housing program, and I just wanted to give a little bit more of a detail regarding this program, kind of what we've done, where it's stemming from, and really give you guys an opportunity to provide any feedback as we continue to move forward with this proposal. So included in your packet was a program kickoff, I guess I would put it, that was put together by our housing program team. So that team is made up of Nick Olzak, one of our PD officers, Joe Stevenson, our planner, and Allison Humsky, our building and housing specialist. So basically, the idea behind this whole housing program that we're looking to derive it from is, in 2009, TIF law created an affordable housing extension. That extension allowed municipalities to extend a TIF district an extra year, and that added increment in that extra year could be put towards affordable housing program. Basically, there are some small restrictions, including that 75% of that income needs to benefit affordable housing. Affordable housing is defined as costing no more, housing that costs no more than 30% of the gross monthly income. It does not state that the person cannot make more than X. It's just based on their income and their housing needs. So I just wanted to make sure I clarify that. So where we are looking at moving this forward is, our TIF District 5 has done very, very well over the last several years. We would actually look at closing TIF District 5 potentially yet this year, so closing it early because it does have a positive end fund balance that we could work with. And that added increment would then go into an affordable housing program that has, we've discussed it a lot, but we have not put anything down on paper as far as specific eligibility, guidelines, things like that. So that's kind of the logistics behind where we're coming from. I think it's known that Manashe's housing stock is definitely aging, and it does need some sort of kickstart to revitalize that housing. And we believe that this program, with the potential of putting approximately $800,000 into this fund, could be that kickstart that really starts to change the atmosphere of Manashe's housing stock. We have, you know, we did some comparables with other communities. We are on the lower end of median home value, lower end for your home built. Again, that's just that aging housing stock, as well as do have on the upper half of the rental demographic. And again, rentals aren't always bad things. However, when we start talking with the school district and other things, one statistic that really stands out is that they state less than 25% of kids that start in kindergarten in Manashe School District graduate. And that's pretty alarming from, that it's likely do a lot to those families that are renting and jumping, those transient families, versus really, this program, one of the goals that we have set is to increase or stabilize homeownership. So increase that homeownership, which would stabilize families and things like that. So again, just kind of going through this program that we, again, drafted from a general discussion standpoint, you know, possible projects, obviously, home upgrades, replacement of windows, roofs, could definitely, you know, look at those older homes with those lead issues, things like that. In addition to property acquisition, possibly raising costs, multi-tenant conversions, so converting those older single-family homes that have been converted into three, four, five, six units that we see some issues with at times, back to a single-family unit. So again, those are just some programs that we have, some eligible projects that we've looked at. We've also looked at multiple different funding sources. There's grant funding, forgivable loans, deferred loans. The, we're kind of leaning towards is that forgivable loan aspect of it, where you would require an individual that would accept a loan to live there for a certain amount of years, and after that time period, that loan could then be forgiven. If they were to move or sell the house, that loan would be repaid back. Again, that kind of ties right back to the homeownership stability, and just really trying to gear on owner-occupied units, really investing in their home and investing in their neighborhood and community. So again, I just want to briefly leave it with the two goals that we've kind of been kicking around a lot is to increase the quality of Manashe's housing stock and increase homeownership stability. We have noted some metrics in there that could potentially be viewed to make sure that this program is working, and just go from there. So I would open it up to any comments, feedback, as well as, you know, our phones are always open if you guys have additional comments passed today, and we would gladly, hopefully, work those into this program as we continue to move forward.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Something I've noticed, especially in my district, which is 78% district, and the multi-tenant conversion. It's a house that we just had a fire in, found out we had five separate tenants living in there. The backyard is a parking lot, literally a parking lot, no green space at all. Just wondering how we can, how something like that happens, for one, and what we can do about things like that. And throughout the city, I keep seeing driveways being expanded, you know? Instead of having four cars, you got five cars now. They bump over the driveway, put some gravel in. Sometimes you don't even do that. And another thing I see that's happening, and it's, the appearance of it does not work at all, and a lot of times there's, we're violating both the street and the sidewalk area, is with Charis driveway apron parking that is being done in the community. And usually, they're sticking out in the street, or they're overhanging on the sidewalk. I get complaints on that. And it really looks terrible. It looks like something you'd see in a really bad neighborhood in a really big city, you know? And it's something that we should really look at at some point because it just really drags down a neighborhood. And the reason they're parking there is because they want to have five cars or six cars, or they got a snowmobile and a boat parked there, and now they want to start opening up the apron for overnight parking. And it's also an issue, not only do I see them, they'll start parallel parking in their aprons now, too. And that gives our plows zero place to push the snow. Now we're going to be damaging cars, and so everybody's getting creative with that apron. And it's just not, it's not a good situation. And it just deteriorates the neighborhood. So what leverage do we have with that a house is in multi-tenant conversion?
I think that's always the hard part about those conversions, and that's why you don't see them happen very often, is they, a lot of these landlords, and not all, you know, put little maintenance into it and just reap the benefit with rental rates. So it's possible that, you know, we look at using some of these funds to look at acquiring them, to incentivize them to leave when situations such as, you know, a fire arises, we can maybe address it in a different way with, you know, friendly condemnation, things like that, working with that owner to, again, clear that site, allow a new home to be built. And I think that would be the real trigger behind any home that we would seek to remove is to, at that point, resell that lot, or possibly even give that lot away, knowing the future benefits of having a new home being built there. But, and again, so there's also homes that pop up for, that the county takes for taxes that haven't been paid and things like that. This funding source would give us an opportunity to look at that home and say, is that home worth us taking a look at for rehabilitation, working with the contractor to get that home up to a standard, possibly, again, taking that home down and putting a new home in its place?
You know, this, last week, 409 First Street was taken down, and it was a home that should have been tore down 25 years ago. And you look at that block now with that home gone, and it was like a lesion or a cancer on that block, and how that block looks so much better because of that one substandard home is gone. And the parking issues were with that home, too, were always parking over the sidewalk. They had five unregistered cars in the backyard. So maybe your department needs a drone so we can, but they always say they can't enter the properties. Well, maybe we need a drone to overlook to make sure that there's not five, six cars back in the back of the house. Also, a home, for instance, like 629 Appleton Street, you know, there's a home that we should have been first in line at the sheriff's sale for something like that. And I think we, your department really needs to take, or whatever department want to address it, to a really active role when these houses come up. And the people that are buying them have no interest in investing anything in them, just want to get someone in there, collect the rent. And I think there's an opportunity with this program and other programs, and I appreciate this document and all the work that was put in by Allison and Nick in this document. And I've seen the work the last few weeks of Rock the Block, and it does make a difference. It does take a home and raise it, and it's amazing the impact that it really has. Thank you.
So what Director Schrader and I, I guess, are looking for this evening are some comments from all of you on types of programs you'd like to see, types of funding you'd like to see us put forward if there's a match involved, types of things that you don't want us to be, us to be involved with, what, how do we measure the return on investment, things like that? And then Sam's going to go back and write that program and then bring it back here again, but he'd like some direction, a little bit on some of the things that you would like to see and not see. So, thank you. Stan?
I was just going to say, I think that takes a special meeting, another workshop or something where we can brainstorm together. This isn't the place for that tonight, so.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. The next item is the Minutes and Communications. Is there a motion to receive the Minutes and Communications? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for the common council to receive Minutes A through F and Communications G through I.
A second. So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenick?
There was.
Alderman Taylor?
I just wanted to talk about the communication on the, from the Hoshkosh Herald, the Southside River Walk Trail, that here's a community that took time to look for these grants, and apparently they were very successful in looking for other ways to pay for trails. And certainly, we have a lot of trails coming up, and I hope that opportunity with the park department, looking at these opportunities and grants, hopefully be successful with that. Thank you.
Okay. So you know the further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda has five items. The minutes to reprove from the common council meeting of September 17th, the Plan Commission and Board of Public Works recommendations for the proposed certified survey map for the right-of-way dedication for the Community Way extension, and the CSM dictating, dedicating the right-of-way for the future Lotus Trail extension, the Public Works recommendations from September 17th, yeah, September 17th, the memorandum of agreement regarding the compensation for cross-jurisdictional wastewater flows, and the payment from MCC, Inc. for the new street construction and street reconstruction of various streets, $126,353.38. Is there any that you would like separated this evening? Alderman Sevenick?
Before I do that, can I ask a question? As far as when we did have our last workshop, were those minutes in the last?
Two minutes of the workshops.
Still council committee meeting. I thought there should be at least who attended and all that kind of...
We typically do workshops at the beginning of meetings, and then we don't have minutes for them, but we separated that one out.
Okay. And how about the CIP?
That was also a workshop.
That was also a workshop, yes.
Right. I think that there should be minutes. There's a lot of important discussion that was there, and if someone says, "Well, don't you remember when we stated this?" and just say, "No." Well, if it's not being televised, I think it needs to be, there needs to be minutes.
Then there shouldn't be workshops. They should be actual meetings.
I consider it an actual meeting anyways, because the public was...
The reason we typically do workshops rather than meetings is so that there's no action taken. If you do an actual meeting, then you can take action during that meeting.
Yeah, but if you put up, you put an agenda together, and if it's not on the agenda, you can't take action otherwise.
But the CIP was on the agenda, so therefore you could have taken action.
I think you'd have to be specific if you want to take...
Anyhow, that's why we typically do workshops, because they're not meetings that we're supposed to be taking action at.
Well, in that case, I'll just kind of...
Can I get comment shorts?
Sure.
Well, Mayor, the reason why is that I want to be able to put something on the agenda for our next meeting, and I was going to possibly pull the common council minutes and try to use that as my reason to do that, but I guess what I'll...
What would you like on the next agenda? We can probably put it on there.
Well, I think we need to have a workshop on Jefferson Park, the CIP about the Jefferson Park and the plans there. It kind of got ramrodded in that meeting, and I think there's a lot more that we need to discuss on that before we proceed, and I would like for us to do that if possible.
We should probably have a workshop then with the park board and the common council together if we're going to do that.
Okay.
But we can try to schedule something where we could get both groups to do that.
That's what I was going to do, pull the park minutes, but then there wasn't anything about the specific item I was talking about.
That's fine.
Okay, so in this, in that case, then, Mayor, I'd like to...
Separate Item 5.
Separate Item 4 and 5.
Okay. Any others? Seeing none, could we have a motion for Items 1, 2, and 3? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for approval of the common council minutes and approval of Item 2 and 3 of the planning commission.
There's a motion and a second. Items 2 and 3 were the recommendation from both the Plan Commission and the Board of Public Works, just so everyone knows in the public. And if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call, eight zero.
Item 4 is the memorandum of agreement regarding compensation for cross-jurisdictional wastewater flows. Do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oops, sorry, hold on. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion for the memorandum of agreement regarding compensation for cross-jurisdictional wastewater flows.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second by Alderman Kruger? Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
We see that the situation, it's been going on for a lot of years, and we're limited to the amount of money that we can go back for. I think it's six years. And I think there's an opportunity here, since there is a shared system over there with the city of Nina, and we can't go back for any more compensation, that we SM, that City of Manashe use their system that's connected over there for the next so many years. They use our system. We didn't get compensated for it, and it should go both ways and say, you know, here's an opportunity for you to pay us back, not financially, but to use your system.
I'm confused. Did you want to speak, Director Rodomski? You help clarify?
The City of Manashe does have, I believe it is...
65.
There are a number, 65 properties that do go into the City of Nina sewer system, and, you know, we can't necessarily go forward with, you know, saying that those properties get to be served for free for 100 years because that would be violating the PSC, you know, rules that we, you know, are following as far as that six-year payback.
But on agreement between the two communities, saying, okay, there was an error here, and we could go back for so many years with these 65 properties, you put them on your system? I mean, I just think it's a creative way and a neighborly way of doing something.
I do not believe that Nina would be acceptable of that arrangement. They have been acceptable to...
You're not speaking for Nina. You're not speaking for the City of Nina, are you?
I am not. However, we did have discussions with them as far as how far back we can go, and we, six years was chosen due to the...
Well, I understand that financially, to be repaid, but I think we should have a conversation and talk about all these years we did this. We have these 65 properties connected to you. Maybe there's a trade here.
We can have those conversations, however, you know, I'm not going to guarantee that we'd get anywhere with that.
Well, I'm not asking for any guarantees. I'm just looking at a creative way to do this. We know that we can't go back more than six years financially, but here we have these properties hooked up to the City of Nina, and, you know, I think it's a, would be a good neighbor policy to say, for X amount of years, you can handle this wastewater as we did for you for these years. And to have, just to have a conversation with them. And it doesn't hurt, like they always say, it doesn't hurt to ask. And I wouldn't mind being in that meeting, too, if you set up something.
So this agreement was negotiated between the City of Nina and the City of Manashe over the past couple of years, and it takes into account both the properties that drain from Manashe into Nina and the properties that drain from Nina into Manashe as part of the compensation that we both pay each other in the future, and the back billing that we had worked on. And that was the agreement that we worked through. If that agreement isn't acceptable to the council, then we should work on a different agreement because you can't separate the two in the current agreement that we have. So we'd have to start that process over. I don't remember exactly how it works, but they look at the flow from those 65 or so properties that drain in, from our system into theirs, offsetting so much of the flow that comes from our prop, their properties into ours, and that's how the calculations are made for future payments.
But if, let's say, we could have went back 50 years, that number would have changed, the financial number would have changed.
Yes, but what you're asking for us to do is change that calculation for the future years.
Oh, I just think, Manashe got totally ripped off, and the state says, okay, or the commission says you can't go back past this point. But I think in all fairness, as a neighborly thing, if I was using my neighbor's water for X amount of years, and I had to pay back part of it, but I think it should be reciprocated back.
So what you're asking us to do is renegotiate the contract that's in the packet?
Well, no, I think that's already done, okay? And we are being compensated up to six years ago, but what I'm saying is that I think we could go further with not being financially compensated, but have the formula, and then taking care of our properties for a few years.
Which would be renegotiating the payment for future years.
Not payment, sharing.
So you're saying that we wouldn't pay for the sanitary sewer flow that flows into their system in the future, but they would pay us for the flow that comes into ours, correct?
Right.
And that would be renegotiating the contract that's within the packet tonight because the formula looks at both of those flows.
Okay, but was that discussed, that for all these years, we're paying their...
It was discussed that we've been...
Okay, but just the financial portion of it was discussed, right? That you could only go back six years?
Well, the financial portion is that we're paying for each other's wastewater flows.
Right, but we only had the opportunity to go back six years, correct?
That was what was negotiated, yes.
By some sort of law with the public service or the state?
That is typical what the PSC would allow, is that six years, I believe?
Yes.
That was not in my, the whole thing was not in my bailiwick here. I was part of the discussions, but not intimately part.
Is there an opportunity to go back and say, and...
Yes, like I said, that would be that we would renegotiate the whole contract, then.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking for, but we could end up with better or worse.
Okay, but I'm asking for some direction. I see financially what we negotiated, but I'm talking just about the sharing for the X.
So what does sharing mean?
Well, that we use their, they used us for all these years.
And so did we use them.
We reverse it for a period of time.
And we used some of their system for that same period of time?
Yeah.
And now you're saying that you want them to pay us to use our system, but not us to pay them to use their system?
Not pay us. I'm not talking any type of financial...
Well, then I have no clue what you're asking.
Okay. I'm asking that, since they used our system for these years, that we use, that we put ours, they use, they pay for part of our system for a number of years.
That's financial. Director Rodomski, did you have, could you help clarify?
I want to point out that, you know, they have 318 properties that have been using our system since, you know, the 1930s. that have been using our system since, you know, the nineteen thirties. We've had sixty-five since the nineteen thirties that use their system. The formulas that we are using to go forward with this, uh, were set based on flow rates for those sixty-five and three hundred and eighteen properties, uh, to renegotiate the actual flow rates at this point, or the, you know, future compensation based on, you know, not paying for our sixty-five properties, uh, would have to go back to the negotiating table with Nina, uh, but that would be, you know, turning down this agreement and then starting over. I do want to point out that this agreement has been talked about since two thousand and nine, and it's taken us nine years to get this far. If we turn back now, there's no telling as far as how far in the future this may go. They have no necessary reason to sign off on an agreement to pay us, other than they are good, being good neighbors. Um, you know, so, uh, we, we have spent a lot of time negotiating. I do feel that this is a good agreement. It's not a great agreement for the city of Manasha, however, it is a agreement that is amenable to both communities at this time.
So was the city of Manasha taken advantage of?
It may have been in the past, however, we're trying to rectify the situation moving forward.
But we are limited, that we can only go back six years, correct?
That, that would be the PSC, you know, regulations would generally be about six years.
And you don't think there's, it's, instead of just the compensation, financial compensation, there's, that we can use their system with these homes to compensate for what they did for all these years?
We are using their system as part of this agreement. We do have sixty-five properties that do use their system.
Right. Well, it's not the answer I was looking for, but that's fine. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Josh, uh, I don't believe I was here for this discussion when it first happened. Uh, can you just really briefly, without going too long into it, uh, just explain how it was discovered that this was even going on? Because I take it it wasn't where one community was hiding behind a back door, snickering after dumping stuff into one system compared to the other, was it?
No, this has been a situation that we found letters from the nineteen eighties that this was taking place. We've probably known about it since, for the life of the system. Uh, however, prior to, you know, the Sewerage Commission adding flows from Fox Crossing, Waverly, and the town of Nina, the city of Nina and city of Manasha just split costs, so it wasn't a huge deal at that point in time. Once the split took place and all of a sudden the flows got reallocated, uh, that's where these costs ended up being shifted from being fifty-fifty to all of a sudden the city of Nina was using our system a little bit more than we were using their system.
And we found this during televising for some repairs for the INI program, that Corey was reviewing tapes and found this lateral that came in that was not on our system maps. And that's what kind of started this. It was a long-forgotten lateral that came in because it didn't matter back in the day, up until, like you said, the mid-eighties, I think?
Yep.
Because we both paid fifty percent of the cost to run the plant, so it didn't really matter how the pipes were hooked together at that point.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you for the explanation. And, uh, Josh, I think you, you said it right, you know, the whole good neighbors thing. I mean, there's, there's a point in time where you have to let go of the little things in order to have a bigger picture, to work with your neighbors. I don't think bickering over this, I thought, I take it that the agreement is, everybody was happy with the agreement at the time when it was agreed to, so, I mean, I wouldn't be for trying to reopen that. I mean, to me, that seems a, a little bit minor, but...
I think we were all a little unhappy, which is usually the sign of a good agreement. Manasha wanted more, and Nina wanted less, and we kind of met in the middle, and so let's bring this to the common council now, and let's get something moving, is kind of what happened at the end. And actually, Alder, uh, Mayor Coffer wanted to pay us a lump sum all at once that was smaller, and Josh and I negotiated, we'd rather have a larger amount of money over time. So that was part of the conversation even after we came into that dollar amount. So Alderman Repello?
Oh, thank you. Uh, Josh, I'm just looking at the numbers. You've, it, this, you said this has been going on since nineteen thirty or roughly right around then?
Nineteen eighties.
Nineteen eighties, okay. And so there was like three hundred and eighteen properties, uh, from Nina and sixty-five from Manasha, so that's two hundred and fifty-three properties. They've been taking advantage of us. And so we're going to get six years back pay or something, trade-off. How much money are we looking at?
Uh, the six years would be twenty-five thousand dollars a year, times six years, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total.
Okay, all right, a hundred and fifty thousand. And that's the most we can get? I mean, we can only go back six years, correct? Okay?
Yes.
And so Nina actually has been taking advantage of us for many more years than this. Okay? So they're not being very neighborly or very honest by not giving us some more. Correct?
Again, we can try and renegotiate the agreement, however, the Nina council has already agreed to this agreement, um, at this time.
Well, I, I'd take the hundred and fifty thousand, definitely, but then I'd also look to, look for some way that we can kind of, uh, uh, um, mistreat Nina a little bit and get it back.
We will not mistreat Nia.
Well, I mean, they still owe us, I mean, that's just bad that they can only, we can only go back six years. I guess we were just poor enough not to, uh, find out this earlier, so, all right, thank you very much.
I do, I do have a great little example of some of the things that Nina does for us that we don't compensate them for as well. We, we don't actually have a traffic engineer and someone that does a lot of work on our traffic signals and controls on those signals, and Nina's person comes over here quite often. I'd say maybe twice a month, once or twice a month, and we never get billed for anything like that. Hiring a consultant would be fairly expensive. So there, there's, there's numerous things like that, that they're able to help us with because they have larger staffs and more technical staffs. So, uh, I would hate to give up that relationship and have to go out and consult for all those things over, over this. So that, that's one example of how we work together, and I'm being whispered about elections over on this side. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I did know that example about the public works area, so...
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Lisa Fagan is back with...
Yep. Alderman Seveney?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the one fifty, what is the one fifty to be used for?
That will be going to our sanitary sewer utility and will be used to offset some of the potential raises in the user costs, uh, moving forward.
And the, um, I, I kind of understand with Ald, what Alderman Repello is referring to and Alderman Taylor, um, but, uh, is there a way to correct this now so that we're not doing this?
There is no good way to, uh, reroute the sewer system at this time. It would be extremely expensive for both communities to be able to do that. For the Nina, it would involve relaying the new sewer main, and for us, it would be rerouting where individual properties go, because our properties on Abbey Avenue share the same line as the Nina properties, so we'd have to lay a second line and reroute every single private, or properties lateral into the new sewer. So if, we're talking a significant expense to try and rectify the situation by doing this flow metering and monitoring. We believe that we are getting about as close as we can get to an equitable, uh, solution. The flow metering and monitoring is generally within, you know, about five percent, and we do have provisions where it's tested quarterly to start with, and then if the test results are very consistent, it gets moved to annually. If the test results are not consistent, or if there's additional users, then it would remain as, uh, quarterly.
Okay, so this is compensation for the past six years. What do we do with the future six years?
That's where the monitoring and the, uh, the flow monitoring and the monitoring of the BOD and suspended solids within both of our sewer systems will be used to calculate the additional payment that is due each year.
All right.
So we do have an additional payment on top of those six years that will be coming in, that additional payment is about twenty-five thousand.
That part wasn't really well explained to us last time around, so that makes a lot more sense. So, um, if we're, we're, then I would have to agree that, uh, this was, uh, a, a better agreement. Sure, could have, we've gone further, uh, probably, um, the cost, I, I guess this really benefits both Nina and Manasha as far as total costs in the long run, and the city will be compensated, um, in future years.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, at the public works meeting, we were told that it's, uh, probably ten percent, uh, that this, it's not very accurate with the flow meters, but it's probably within ten percent. Also at that meeting, there, there were some, um, uh, discoveries, uh, at the Board of Public Works that I asked about properties that weren't listed on these maps that we had at that time, and, um, thinking that there might even be more properties on the island that are into our, uh, onto our system, uh, at the corner of Annup and Nicola Boulevard. And I don't think we ever got answers about, uh, I asked if Thea Clark was on that system. Uh, they showed the properties on Nicola Boulevard and First Street that weren't on that map at all, and, um, so I haven't seen any answers on those, and also Abbey Avenue, we've turned, tore down a lot of homes on that street. There's probably four homes up to the railroad tracks, and we've probably tore down six, seven properties there, so I'm wondering if that formula is, is right or not, uh, on that street too.
The maps are an accurate depiction of the sewer service area for both Man, that Manasha has going into the, uh, city of Nina's interceptor, and the city of Nina map, uh, shows an accurate represented, uh, representation of what goes into the city of Manasha, uh, interceptor sewer. All of the bills will ba, be based on water bills to in, each of those individual properties, so based on the amount of water that actually is going into those properties. So that, that's how they are being billed. So we are, we are getting as accurate as possible, you know...
But the maps, the maps weren't accurate that we had on our desk here last week. You know, we were talking about that, but for time saving, I'll, I'll stop up and talk to you, and we'll look at those maps, uh, because I, I saw some inaccuracies on those maps.
Well, I guess, what were the inaccuracies that you saw? Because the, the maps themselves were accurate. I think the inaccuracy was within the description...
Yes.
Uh, of the properties in Nina. However, that description is overweight by the map itself and by the sewer properties that are actually being served by the sewer, so there was no need to change that description.
I think, I think both documents should be accurate when they get to our desk here, and, and they certainly weren't, but, um, and I asked about if Thea Clark was on that system too, and, uh, they did not know at that time, and the Nicola School, and, uh, if they were also on that system. So I'm not sure if, uh, if that was accurate, but, uh, for time's sake, I'll stop up and we'll look at that in your office. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
Do we have a motion for item five? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion for the payment to MCC in, in corp for the contract unit two zero one eight dash zero two for the new street construction and street reconstruction for the various streets that department head Josh mentioned, and for the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents, and that would be payment number two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payroll and payable and payroll for September twentieth through September twenty-seventh. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for the term of September twentieth through September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of one million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Is there a motion? Oliver Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand seventeen through nineteen licensing period, as listed under approved on the police department's memo dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who's the second. Okay, Mark? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item three is the future consideration of the acquisition of the Lawson Canal. Alderman Taylor? We can start out with, do you want to start, Director Schrader, or Director...
Yeah, I can certainly kick this off here. So provided in your packet was a, uh, a memo explaining the, uh, the request in, in front of you, um, but, uh, basically, uh, to take a look at the whole, uh, whole picture, um, the city has been proactively looking at the redevelopment, uh, along Annup Street, the Annup Street corridor for several, several years. This started with the creation of Tiff District eleven, uh, to assist in the demolition of the Gilbert Paper Mill, um, the construction of the new office building, and, um, up until recently, uh, the, uh, RDA purchased the former Bonta or Donnelly Publishing facility. So the, uh, that, that sale, um, completed this spring, uh, at the end of March of, uh, twenty eighteen. As part of the RDA's process of, of looking at that, they have talked, um, through many vision cycles, um, as well as they, they had a developer, um, interested in the, just the four-story portion, uh, of the property, furthest away from the, the Racine Street Bridge on the far western side of the property, um, to develop that, or to give basically a memorandum of understanding, so, um, no signed agreements, no nothing, but basically having this developer do some due diligence to see, um, what type of, uh, facilities this property, this project could, um, could hold, um, and come back and present that to the RDA for potential purchase, uh, of, of the property, um, itself. This, uh, this developer did come back, um, after that ninety-day due diligence period, um, he spent roughly ten to fifteen thousand dollars doing some due diligence, market studies, um, different analysis, working, uh, with an architect, structural engineer, things like that. One of his, uh, major holdups that, that he had, did find, um, was, was the Lawson Canal. And the, he explained it that, um, you know, I, he feels that him, himself as a developer to invest in this property, as well as any other developer, um, would, would need some sort of resurrection as far as the future of that canal. It, the canal itself, um, it is a privately owned property, um, by, uh, Sunoco US Paper, um, as far as what we have found in our, uh, deed restrictions. It's basically from the, um, access bridge, uh, towards the dam, uh, down to, down to... the access bridge towards the dam down to down to the former Gilbert Paper Mill site, and it does include the entire drive aisle on the north side of the Bonta property with the property line basically abutting the north side of the building with some of the building actually intruding across. So one of the primary or the directive of the redevelopment authority was to to motion to the common council just to start the discussion back up for your consideration of allowing staff to to look at acquiring this property. Now, this does not mean that the council is giving its blessing to acquire the property whatsoever. It's more or less just saying yes, based upon the development standpoint, the downtown vision plan, as well as I passed Brian and Mike, because we have talked for many years as well about the canal restoration project. So I will let Brian touch on that a little bit, because that also adds to this. So not again only on a development standpoint of stinging a piece of water that may have environmental concerns, but but where does the future lie with that property to really capitalize on on the potential that this site has to offer? Brian?
Thank you, Sam. Yeah, I think most of you are aware that the our department has sort of been leading this effort to look at the Lawson Canal over many years. We have John Gumto in the audience today. He's he's our kind of our lead consultant with Stantec. So if anybody has any questions for John, he's here. But, you know, really, I think what's happening here is sort of what we had predicted several years ago. You know, I had always thought that this the canal project that we've been working on over the past several years would be great for development down there. And I think you're starting to see that happen. You know, we have at least one developer now who's, as Sam's indicated, very, I think, excited about the project down there. So we're, I guess, we stand ready and willing and able to, you know, bring this canal project forward. You know, if the council does want a full presentation on the work that's been done to date, that certainly can be done. I think it's definitely something that'll help that site down there, and we are very excited about it. And if there's any other questions, I, you know, I guess we weren't really thinking that we're going to get into a lot of detail. You do have an attachment in your in your packet that sort of gives you the the big picture, a two thousand seventeen concept that kind of shows both sides of the river and how we want to naturalize that, create this, you know, free-flowing channel through there, which we think will have some recreational benefit as well as helping out redevelopment of the site.
So and I think I'll just just kind of end briefly with kind of coming back around. So when we we did purchase the the Bonta property, environmental phase one, phase two, an additional site investigation was done on that property. It did come back favorable. So we we would expect that through through some sort of negotiations, purchase agreement, whatever we would bring back, depending on on your direction tonight, that that would be a hurdle that we would have to to tackle. Now, knowing that Stantec and John Gumto and Brian Tungate have done extensive research, as other aldermen have mentioned tonight, about future grants that that this site could could obtain to potentially be fully funded for restoration project. But really, to start getting into that, the first piece is is to look at having that conversation of the acquisition and how that ties in with environmental and restoration and future development of this site. So I'll just leave you with our recommendation tonight would be to direct staff to analyze the feasibility, purchase options, and potential funding sources for the possible acquisition of the Lawson Canal to be brought back to common council at a future date.
Alderman Sevanik?
Well, that's how the motion should have read in the in the minutes. But obviously, this is going to have to come back and everything. And I just don't want staff to think that tonight, when we give them this direction, they think, whoa, you made that decision back on October first of two thousand and eighteen, you know? That happens so often. So I'll I'll move that we direct staff to analyze the feasibility and purchase options and potential funding sources for the possible acquisition of the Lawson Canal to be brought back to the common council for consideration.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Is there further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Brian, you know, this has been around since Mayor Laux, which is probably about sixteen years ago. And we first we heard of the kayak. This is going to bring, it's going to be a regional thing, and people are going to come from all over for that. Sixteen years, and we haven't seen a lot of things showing up here. You had some drawings upstairs. I'm surprised those aren't down here tonight that we're looking at. If you look at this first map with the Gilbert Paper Site, Gilbert Paper Mill Site, this canal property you have highlighted in blue doesn't go down into the Gilbert property. And I'm wondering, what is the impact on that Gilbert property in that canal? Is there, you know, there's concrete walls down there, there's other things in that property, and I'm just wondering why the Gilbert property isn't listed through this thoroughly with the canal?
I'll try to answer that to the best of my ability. So we've we've had a lot of discussion with DNR staff about how different components of that canal would be dealt with. I think what you're referring to is the remnant piece of the Gilbert Mill that's still there. They view that as a private dam. We've talked to the owners of that parcel, and they're they're ready and willing to work out some donation or agreement with us when the the time is right. A lot of moving parts to this project, but I think these, like a puzzle, these pieces can be put together, you know, in the proper sequence. So whenever the right sequence and the timing of of needing that piece of structure to go away, that that can happen. And there's funding mechanisms to have that be able to happen. And there's DNR tentative approval to have that happen. So that's, you know, really what I can tell you at this point, that we've tried to touch base with all the folks who who will permit this and regulate it and so forth. And so we think we have all the sort of the tentative answers to the questions.
I've asked for probably the last fourteen years, show me the permits that the Corps of Engineers is going to allow us to use so much water for their flow through that. I have never gotten that document. And now you see there's some permitting with the DNR, certainly. All that should be done ahead of time before we move on anything or spend money on anything to see if if that if any of that could be accomplished, especially with those agencies. To this date, what have we spent so far in this project?
I don't have those figures in front of me. I can I can put that together for you. It's been over, actually, it was two thousand six was the feasibility study that was first done on on sort of area-wide opportunities for for these sorts of things. So, yeah, I can I can get that together for you. You know, really, I think you're you're asking very good questions. And if you and there are many more questions and answers to be given. But if I think if the council wanted to, we could do a full workshop to really lay everything out, you know, A to Z. You know, I have some answers to some of your questions tonight, but I don't know how in-depth, you know, you'd like me to get tonight on that. But so perhaps a full presentation would address everybody's questions.
Okay. Sam, is the current building encroaching on the Lawson property?
Yes, according to the ALTA survey that was done with the purchase agreement through LSC Communications, a portion of the building does encroach onto the Lawson Canal property.
Okay, how much of it?
Ten feet, if I had to throw a number out there. But again, I would have to look directly at that ALTA survey. It's it's basically a bump out on the back of the building that extends out onto that property.
Okay. And also, the developer said that he needs to build balconies over the the property, the Lawson property along the canal there, so they can have access. So we wouldn't be able to have access to the dam if those balconies were built.
That was a part of the idea behind behind needing the acquisition, yes, was the potential for the balconies. But it does add to the overall site layout as well, and how that how that whole site holistically from Bonta through the the trail system, the connections to the Gilbert Paper Mill, to across the street, Annup corridor, how that all kind of fits together as well.
I wish this map was up here for the public at home. Anytime we're talking to big projects like this.
Call the head James and ask for that. I will take full blame on that one. Stan Stan did mention that. I dropped the ball.
And I'm looking at this map here. Where do we where is the property ten feet encroaching on that property?
So if you're looking at the map, the the high bay four-story portion of the building is is kind of the gray rectangular building on the far western side. And then there's a larger gray area, which we refer to as a two-story high bay area. It's right off the north side of that area is primarily where that encroachment would take place.
And was there an east end with the Sunoco people or whoever owns the Lawson?
Not not to our knowledge.
The what does the current developer like about that shoreline?
About the Lawson Canal shoreline or the?
The Lawson Canal.
I I think he sees, you know, potentially the the ability that the Lawson Canal has to be an amenity to Manasha. I mean, we have the ability to have a premier site in the entire Fox Valley that will draw people to live, work, play right here in Manasha. And and I think that's that's the capability that we have. If we don't do that right, we, you know, could just have another smaller development site.
So so what's he asking for there? What what needs to be done to that canal that that he thinks?
At this time, for him to continue to move forward, and again, I will state that the RDA has not signed any formal documentation that they have linked with them. I know there's been past conversations about doing a request for proposal for some of the other sites. I would completely agree with that. But again, as as far as he is concerned, as a developer, without the city having any interest in that property, he does not see how he could continue forward, as well as if at this time, we went out for any type of RFP, we would find that same exact concern with every developer that came through is what is the what is the moving what is a design moving forward? What is a vision for this site? And and I think that's where it's it's coming back to the RDA as a whole made that recommendation to to the council to consider the acquisition.
Looks like we're going to watch a football game here. In this document here to the common council, it says, site itself directly facing the asset of the river and the dam, in addition to the possibility of creating a unique naturalized waterway. Okay, what is a unique naturalized waterway?
That that is potentially the project that Brian and Stantec have have been working on for for many years is that that restoration project, having a naturalized waterway where people can traverse across around the dam, where they can fish, where they can kind of just sit next to running water. It could be a very neat and unique.
And we already have part of that, that people can sit next to the running water there, because the water does flow, correct?
Yes.
How would we get past the bridge? Let's see, you want to bring, you said boating opportunities. There's a fixed bridge there just past Racine Street Bridge. How would the boating community traverse that with that fixed bridge there in the low canopy on it?
I I never mentioned boating opportunities.
So right now, the along the Lawson Canal on the south side, we have sheet pilings put in there like we have in our shoreline at Driftson Park and everything. Why would that have to change on that south side that we have a permanent shoreline in there?
Could you further explain the question? Or Brian, if you could you?
In our investigation of that, that sheet piling would stay there. The restoration of the canal would happen inside those walls. The walls may be cut down a little bit, but they would they would stay in place. As far as we know, there would be no need to take it out.
If the walls were cut down, then how do you continue that access point between the building and the water for them to get to the Corps of Engineers to get to their property?
I'm not sure.
If you're going to cut the pilings down, you can have.
Cut the wall down.
You're going to cut the wall down.
You could theoretically lower the walls a little bit.
Okay, along with the driveway and everything behind the building.
Yeah, that would be more of a redevelopment question. How you if from a grading perspective, I'm not sure how you if you need to have that done.
Are you questioning how the Army Corps would
Yes.
gain access?
Yes.
Okay. So through through our negotiation, future negotiations with the the DOT through real estate acquisition, we will be having conversations with them about about that future access. We've looked at, you know, the possibility of trying to use that existing bridge. However, that is very tight and eats up a lot of development. We've looked at extending Oak Street north, and hopefully through our negotiations, again, with a loss asset of a bridge, we would look at negotiating that, excuse me, back into our requirement and our need is that we would need just compensation for that. Now, again, it's negotiation, so I have no idea what that end title will be. But we have looked at, again, a future access onto that peninsula across the Lawson Canal.
And if we don't do anything to it, what is this current developer going to do? If we're going to say we're going to leave it Lawson Canal like it is, what is this current developer going to do?
We could certainly move forward with that. It just might not be the end product that that really makes Manasha proud.
Oh, we're very proud now.
Yes, we are very proud. I I'm not saying that we are not, but I'm saying
We're not going to put our.
The potential for this property is a is a premier premier site.
Because as I've asked you, why don't we entertain an RFP to let other developers in here to look at this property? And you say, well, he's not asking for anything. And but he is asking for something. He asking us to own a river and a power canal, which is, I can't imagine what the cost would be. My brother did his backyard for one lot. It was fifty thousand. The next lot he acquired, it was another fifty thousand. Two residential lots, a hundred thousand dollars. And I can't imagine what a whole Lawson Power Canal with the Gilbert property.
And that's that's what we're asking for, is to allow us to to look into that, because we don't have any ideas.
And I agree with Alderman Sevanik. Let's not get too far out where you said October first, you guys said this. I agree a hundred percent with what Alderman Sevanik said. And apparently, we need a workshop and to bring back what you're looking for and what the developer might be looking for.
So we'll be scheduling a workshop Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Well, we're all retired, so it all heck with the people that work, you know?
Oh, hold on. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. What staff is looking for this evening is simply some direction, as we gave a few items ago on our agenda. And the Redevelopment Authority is trying to figure out the challenges that go along with this site, that come with this site as well. And the RDA sees that canal, which you can plainly see, literally divides that property into two pieces. Right now, it's, the canal itself is private property. And the RDA is doing what it can to maximize the potential value and the potential, quite frankly, of this waterfront site. And so having that canal become part of the Bonta property would make, the RDA views that as making this site more marketable, more attractive, and as having greater potential and essentially a great return on investment to the city in the long run. And so they, the RDA, put forward this idea to consider this as an option, a way to make that attract, that property the best available for development.
Attorney Captain wanted to make a comment here, too, about why we're here this evening. Go ahead.
When the developer, or proposed developer spoke to the RDA, there were three things that potential developer described that interfere with, or at least need to be taken into consideration prior to development. Three issues that have to be addressed. And one of them was the Lawson Canal, which I think probably, looking at it, you can understand that because it does divide the property. But there are a number of reasons if someone would wish to use it, perhaps they would want to know, and this particular developer did identify, if there's any environmental conditions, this developer would want to know about that. Obviously, the encroachment was an issue for him. From my point of view, part of the land that is associated with the canal, not just the waterway, but the land, including that building, you, I'm sure, have heard of adverse possession, and that building has been there for a very long period of time. So it is likely that it may already be owned by the Redevelopment Authority, because if that area's been used, then potentially a claim could be filed indicating that that is part of it. But if not, you know, then there could be some other legal issues that perhaps would come up with that property, and the potential developer wants to know what those are. And then the third issue had to do with electric overhead lines. And that is obviously a question that can be potentially answered, what's going to happen with the overhead lines. But those three issues were things that the RDA expects that any potential developer would be concerned with and would want to know the answers to that. And so it was recommended that they ask the city council if the council would consider acquisition of that Lawson Canal. And if not, if the council doesn't wish to touch it at all, then that is something that the RDA does need to disclose to potential developers, because they would have to obviously think about, well, what does that mean? What do we have to do with this? Is anyone going to be interested or not in it? So it just depends. The RDA did not believe that it could move forward with the next step if it did not understand what the common council's opinion is on it, because obviously, they don't have funds necessary to work on these things on their own. They need to have the permission from the common council in order to move forward on anything.
Seeing no further discussion, Alderman Taylor?
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. There was nothing on the RDE agenda that talked about the Lawson Canal. Absolutely nothing. It was the R.R. Donley, the Bonta property. We have an Alderman on that committee. I was present. Another Alderman was president, the mayor, the city attorney. Yet, we allow the RDA to violate the open meetings laws, that no one knew we were talking about the Lawson Canal, and yet, it's on our agenda today. And the chairman of the RDA, she takes insensitive training that we all took a year ago.
Mr. Taylor, that's not appropriate to be talking about at this point.
It is, because...
We're talking about...
She brought up, she brought up, see, it's all right that the RDE didn't have it on their agenda to talk about it, and then I mentioned that it wasn't on their agenda.
I'm okay with you talking about that.
And that their chairman chastised a member of the public and called her the Roberts Rules of Orleans lady.
Mr. Taylor...
And that's insensitive to the people of this community, Mayor, and it was not on their agenda.
Mr. Taylor, we're talking about the item that's on the agenda tonight, the Lawson Canal.
And they did not have them either. But see, now you call it out, that's what I was trying to get to.
I'm not the chair of that committee.
Yeah, and you were in the room, and you watched and chastised a public member.
But I'm still not the chair of the committee.
And you watched it. And the attorney was here, and this was not on the agenda.
Alderman Taylor, we need to stick with what's on the agenda.
Thank you. And let's tell the RDA that when you're in the room, the attorney's in the room, and its re Alderman are in the room.
The chairman is in charge of the meeting.
Here we go. He's a representative of the city, and if he's going to chastise people of the community and misuse his power, and then violate the laws of the state of Wisconsin, open meetings laws...
Mr. Taylor, you're chastising a member of the public right now as well.
That's right.
That would be out of order.
That's right.
It's not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's why I was getting at it. It's completely out of order for the Lawson Canal to be talked about at the RDA.
Is there a motion to recess for five minutes until...
No, that's fine. I've done.
There's a motion to recess for five minutes? Is there a second? There's, motion dies for lack of a second. Alderman Nichols?
Now, you're going to have to tell me if this is appropriate or not, because Attorney Captain was at that meeting, and a question was asked of her as to whether or not the motion was acceptable. And I was wondering if she could address that.
Again, it's not on the same topic. It's not germane to what's on the agenda this evening.
Thank you for that clarification.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
I have to ask the wait mayor and tell him I can't get me my screen back.
If we could get the screen back, but the motion is, if I can, oh, there it is, to direct the staff to analyze the feasibility, purchase, options, and potential funding sources for the possible acquisition of the Lawson Canal to be brought back to the common council for its consideration.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item four is the Nina Minasha Sewage Commission's claim with Wisconsin Security Insurance Fund. Attorney Captain, did you want to comment on this before we move forward?
This is one of the, I guess I'd call it a cleanup piece relative to the PCB litigation. As you are aware, the Home Insurance Company, which is one of the insurance companies that Nina Minasha Sewage Commission had during the time period when the whole matter of deposits of PCB into the Fox River occurred, that particular insurance company went into receivership a number of years ago, and I want to say it was last year that after the Nina Minasha Sewage Commission entered into a settlement agreement and a consent agreement that was signed by the court in the PCB litigation, and dollar figure as part of the settlement agreement was paid out. When we knew what that amount was, there was a claim that was filed with the receiver in the Home Insurance Company case, and you may recall that we were paid like 10% or something like that, and we split that with Nina. So there was a loss there. And so at that point, then, a claim was filed with the Wisconsin Security Insurance Fund to, which is set up in the event there's a receivership of an insurance company to help to pay for that. And there's a formula that determines whether or not a company or a claimant, I should say, is eligible to receive monies. And it was at first denied, the claim that was submitted to the Wisconsin Security Insurance Fund. And then there was an appeal that was made. As part of the appeal process, the Wisconsin Insurance Fund personnel, whoever is in charge of the claim, did have a discussion with regard to potentially settling the claim rather than proceeding through the appellate process, which could end us up in court. And of course, we're still paying insurance, or, excuse me, attorney fees, which are not covered by insurance on this, obviously, because it doesn't have anything to do with the PCB litigation itself. And so they are offering a settlement amount, and it is my recommendation, Attorney Gedleski's recommendation, as well as our outside counsel, to accept this settlement offer. So that's what I'm requesting.
Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to recommend that the Nina Minasha Sewage Commission accept this settlement offer of $250,000 from the Wisconsin Security Insurance Fund of Wisconsin to resolve our Nina Minasha Sewage Commission claim arising from the Home Insurance Company liquidation.
Second. So motion and second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any other discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for Attorney Captain. The last sentence in this memo with the settlement, the ongoing litigation relating to the cleanup of PCBs in the Fox River has largely concluded. Could you speak to that, please?
That would be relative to the Nina Minasha Sewage Commission. There are still appeals that are ongoing, but they are other companies. The things that Nina Minasha Sewage Commission has been involved in has completed.
That is great news.
Cross my fingers, cross my toes.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a... I think that's fine.
Okay.
Could we have a roll call vote, please? Just make sure that the minutes are...
Yep, I'll have it. I've got it in the minutes.
Okay.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Need to turn it on though, too.
Oh, excuse me. I have to show us.
There you go. Item five is a request by Simply Incredible Business Developments and Christine Soans to release $20,000 of escrow funds for asbestos abatement at 198 River Street. Alderman Severnick?
Mayor, before we do that, we had a meeting, and we discussed this. And now, if we do this, would we be receiving the bills so that we know that the work is being done?
I believe the way that this is...
I mean, I'm not willing to cut a check for $20,000 and then say, "Go ahead and do the abatement." If we know that $20,000 of work is being done, we're billed, and if Todd Drew can maybe look at it and say, "Yeah, this much has been done," then I'm okay with releasing the $20,000.
I believe the contract is structured in such a way that we pay the contractor directly. I'm not sure what the inspections would be on it or any of those items. I don't know if you have any insight on that, Attorney Captain?
The request for the release of $20,000 is for a down payment that is required of the company that is, that Ms. Soans or Something Credible Business Development contracted with. And as part of the agreement, they are, Something Credible Business Development has to put down $20,000. And then they do some work, the way that it's structured, they'll do some work, and then they will bill again for, like, the next boiler or something, I think is how it was structured. So then the company would need an additional, whatever amount, $25,000, I think, was the amount in the contract, to go to the next phase, $25,000 for the next phase. The total amount, as I recall, was 125 or 150? I forgot. Oh, 120.
Yeah.
$120,000. And that is the amount that he's requesting down is $20,000.
Have we talked to the... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to mention that the, there would have to be a plan of removal that gets submitted to the Wisconsin DNR. And then there is a state inspector that would be going out and inspecting as the work is being completed.
No, we did. I'll explain it later. So, okay, so the state will also be following through on this?
Yes.
You know, I was kind of feeling comfortable, because we have a qualified individual here, but that's good news that the state would.
In the past, we've spoken with Mr. Drew, and because of the connection with the city and that facility, it's likely that we would have a different state inspector come in other than him.
Okay.
Just because it could be considered a conflict at that point.
All right. So, question for the city attorney. You feel comfortable, then, at this point, with doing this?
The reason that I'm bringing it here is because of the fact that the, you noticed that I provided a notice of default, because the work has not been done.
Right.
It was supposed to have been done.
A long time ago.
Correct. What was provided is this agreement. I did check on the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institution website, which is the site that any business who is operating in the state of Wisconsin needs to be registered through them. This is a company that I did not see registered through the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions. I did provide this information.
I did.
-to Ms. Soens. The company, however, is listed as one that is certified by the state of Wisconsin to perform asbestos work. From what I understand, there is one person. So basically, the company is, at least the way I would describe it, is Ramon Velez doing business as Wisconsin Asbestos Removal and Demolition. So it's an individual who is the, you know, it's a sole proprietor, let's put it that way.
Have we seen any, have we contacted this? There must be a phone number. Have we contacted them as far as other work that they may have done?
No. Other work that they may have done, you mean in the state?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, oh, I'm not feeling comfortable then. But I think it was kind of for us as staff and that that have done more due diligence to bring forward to us to make this decision. I don't have enough information to feel comfortable enough to release the, this dollar amount unless I know this is a legitimate company and a company that has done work in the past somewhere in the state. Otherwise, to me, I don't know if it would be appropriate at this time. I'd like to do it so that we get the work done, but I don't have enough really information to, unless I went out and did it on my own, which sometimes we're arguably told we shouldn't be doing that. So I'll let other aldermen speak on this.
The attorney had one other comment to think for your question.
The, as I mentioned, this particular company is listed as being certified to perform the job. The company identifying as an LLC is not registered with the state of Wisconsin unless it's a different name, which they, I mean, what they're saying on this contract. But that is the only information that I'm able to provide. And I don't believe our staff would not be commenting on, you know, who someone else selects as a asbestos removal contractor. I mean, we wouldn't want to put ourselves or the city in the position of saying this is a person who can do it or can't do it. It really isn't, we have not used them. We have not used them. I can tell you that. That I do know.
You guys, will you yield Ted and James?
Let's do it, Stan.
Oh, thank you. I mean, it's very simple. I mean, number one, you either have your, you said it's a limited partnership, okay. Do they have a seller's permit? Do they have anything else out there that, do they have state revenue records? Do they pay, have they paid unemployment? Have they, I mean, these are things that I do quarterly that anybody can look at. So can, I mean, if they're not doing that, then they're not a legitimate business. So if, unless they're a legitimate business, they're not paying Medicare or Social Security or any of the taxes or then they're not a business.
So when this request came in, the first thing that we looked at was, is this contractor licensed to do this type of work in the state? And that was the one thing that we did find, that they do have a license to do that type of work in the state. Certified to do that type of work in the state. So that was the thing that we checked on. The reason that this, in the past, if the, if Simply Incredible Business Development issued us, issued, gave us a invoice and it was for asbestos abatement, that was what the, what the escrow was for, we paid it. We didn't check on their contractors first. We didn't do any of those things. It was just, did it fall within what the escrow was originally established for? The reason that this is coming forward is they are in default of their original agreement. So we didn't want to continue that process at that point.
Well, I don't want to keep issuing any money unless we have some idea that the work is being done.
Yes, and that's the same idea that Pam and I talked about, is we want to make sure that they are certified to do the work and that we would only pay them after, or in this case, it's a down payment. I don't know in some cases what ability we have to keep Mrs. Soens' money. If she's doing what, this is her money.
I realize that.
And she's proposing to do with it what we originally kept it for. And the contractor that she is proposing to use is certified to do the work.
One person to do an entire steam utility plant.
So if you would like additional information, we would want to collect that information tonight and then we can go back and get that.
It does not exist as a business, but is certified. And I know, I think Alderman Kruger's even certified to do this kind of work, but he doesn't operate it as a business or he did it in his past practice.
So, so if you would like us-
So what if someone's certified, it doesn't tell me that you're a business to accept revenue from another, either government or another business?
So if you would like to place other restrictions on this, we should have that list. We can gather that information.
I just want to know if they're a legitimate business, if he's a legitimate business. And then, and then when certain, when $20,000 of work is done and I see that his bill that he did X amount of work, then that's fine. But if he's just not doing any work and just billing her, we're being duped.
Well-
But again, I took up enough time, I know there are-
You sure can.
Three other aldermen that wanted to speak on this.
My recommendation would be then that the release of $20,000 could not be used for the down payment, but rather would have to be used after $20,000 of the work has been completed.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Sevanik and I'll explain a little different, too. The scope of the project, I think somehow should be developed here. Let's say company A will do 10 feet of asbestos removal for $20,000 and number two company would do 50 feet of removal. I guess that's what the point we're kind of getting at here. And we all have concerns about this business and, and what's going on. And could we require bids for this project?
No.
Since they've defaulted, I mean, is there any legal way to say we'd like three companies to come in and show us what we're going to do for this amount of money? Here's $20,000, here's $40,000, here's $60,000.
Attorney says yes.
Okay. And I think that would make us all feel more comfortable that, that we require bids. And the city, oh, we require bids on just about everything we do. I think it's an opportunity here to, to make sure that we don't get duped at the end here and also that, that other companies, this company might only do 10 feet of asbestos removal for that amount of money, where these other two companies may do much more than that. So I would like to see a bid process on this.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, just clarify a few, few issues. A corporation, LLC corporation, all that has to register with the DDA, DBA technically still is a business, but they're not required to file with the state when they're doing a DBA. But LLCs, corporations, you do, I do find it a little bit disturbing that they are listed as an LLC and they are not registered with the state. But they are, but they do have a certification. There's three different levels of certification for asbestos removal. They are in default. I mean, I would much rather see this where they pay the money up forward and we reimburse them as they expend the money themselves. Now again, I was not here for that session, but do they, with the situation that was arising from the last meeting, are we sure that they still own the building 100% and, or is there other entities involved with this?
We believe that they do. I don't think that the building itself was part of the discussion at the last meeting.
Okay. And I don't know if anybody knows, but the, the insurance required for abatement is, is the insurance coverage there to justify, an LLC would have better insurance than a DBA doing business because a DBA would signify as just a single person doing it, you know, small houses and all that. This, as Alderman Sevanik said, this is a large job that usually requires supervisors, a pretty decent containment, capsulation and all that. Is there a way to verify that they do have the proper insurance for this, just in case something breaks containment and stuff flies out of there, that at least the owners are covered and work covered for any exposure liabilities on that?
We can certainly pass that along to the owners. I don't, I don't know how far we want to get into their business.
Well, that, well, that, that's the other thing I was saying is-
This is their money, it's not our money.
Right.
And I understand that we don't want to hand them a check and have nothing be done, but also if you're going to start a project, I don't know many contractors that are going to go start a project without a down payment either.
Right, right.
So that's what they're asking for, is the down payment to do some of the encapsulizing, the containment.
Well, no, it'd be removal encapsulization, happens afterwards, afterwards removed. But still, on a $120,000 project, $20,000 is not much of a down payment. So I'm not, that's not clicking with me either, but.
So, but that is the council's prerogative at this point. They can request other things if they would like, but again, I don't want to get too deep into another person's business.
If we issued the check, would it be to this individual?
That is how the past practice has been, yes.
I guess that's, that's, that's better. But I agree with the mayor, we shouldn't be dictating how they have to operate their business and that. I just, I'm just concerned that this may not be a business. That's all. I haven't, I have no proof that shows me otherwise. I've been pretty much told it probably isn't.
And we can, we can definitely ask for more information as to those things, if that's where the council would feel more comfortable doing that.
Okay.
Alderman Taylor?
Thanks, Mayor. How would be the process for us to ask for, for bids on this, to make sure that we're going to get the proper amount of work done for this on a penny? And they're no longer in business, is that correct? You said it's in receivership? The people that own the building?
No one ever said that, no.
I thought, I don't want to discuss anything, but I thought in our meeting, the bank has keys to the building.
The, I don't know that for certain, no. That's not my understanding. There's two separate businesses there, Simply Incredible Foods and Simply Incredible Business.
So how would we go about making sure that we have bids on this?
You would make a motion to that, that prospect? If that's what you feel that we should do, that we would require them to get bids on the project? The county council would review the bids and determine which company that they can use to do this and then we release the funds to that company.
Well, I'm just thinking, can we get the bank for our buck? How do we know that we keep spending money and we're going to get this and all of that?
This is not, this is not our money, though.
Okay, I understand that.
This is her money.
Okay.
What would you like to? We can say this was her money that was deposited to do this work. We do, we may have control of this money now because of the default, but she's requesting to do what she originally said she was going to do with those funds now. And we have the ability to say yes or no at this point, too. Do we want to release those funds?
So we'd probably get both questions answered here if this is a viable company and if we had bids, we would know that if it's a viable company or not. So how would the attorney want us to write, to write that question about bids?
James, you're the only one that wants to do a bits, okay? So let's just end it here because I'm not going to sit here till 10 o'clock out of this. It's not for us, it's a business. That's like me going and telling-
Did anybody else say that? I'm just asking.
Telling Intertape, "I want you to have bids on your lawnmower service" or something. It's not for our, it's not our, for us to do. We can't micromanage this business. It's not for us to do.
Here, I had the floor and you turned his microphone on.
I did turn his mic on.
Yes. And I don't know if the rest of the council is seeing that.
Then you would-
We should have bids or not. I can't, I can just bring-
Then you would make a motion. You would make a motion to do that, if that's what you want to do.
And I asked the attorney, how would that be, how would she like that crafted?
It depends on how you want it crafted.
I'm not the legal expert here, you know? I just want to make sure that the citizens of Minashe here get what we put this money away for, to get the proper asbestos removal. Some people are worried about the company. This would take it off, off the table that we have the proper bids done for the property, if that's what we can do. That's all I'm asking. I'm just trying to get the most bang for our buck and usually doing that with bids helps. Just asking the attorney how she would want that crafted.
The attorney said you could make a motion that they would provide three estimates to the city, but she would still then have the ability to choose whichever of those three that she wanted to ask for the funds to be released for.
Okay. That defeats the whole purpose, thank you.
I'm not sure. It looks like Steve's next.
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding is when this was discussed last, that everybody decided that it was going to be a reimbursement thing, where the money is spent and the city would reimburse the money or pay the entity directly, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how it's worked in the past.
Okay. And seeming that was, what, two weeks ago? I think-
We didn't discuss this two weeks ago.
Right, but the concept on how the funding would be handled.
We didn't discuss any, oh, but that, the discussion a few weeks ago was using the funds for something other than its original intended purpose.
Right.
That's what the request was.
That's what the request was, but my understanding is what the conclusion was from the body is that it had to be for the asbestos removal.
Yes.
And the method of that would be they either spend their money first and it gets reimbursed then, or we would pay directly to the contractor doing the work, correct?
That's how it worked in the past. Do you remember if that's what we discussed last time? I don't remember.
There was, there was no vote.
Okay. So, but that, that is how it worked in the past and that's how we've always done it in the past, yes.
I mean, I would assume seeming that is the direction the conversation took from my gathering of the information, I think that's what this body should stick to as far as how to handle this situation.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, somewhere in here last time or this time, she did look for other, other companies that would do the asbestos removal. They were the, the, the most inexpensive, so she chose those, Ramon Velez's Asbestos Removal and Demolition Company in Berlin. Now, even if Ramon doesn't do any-
Now, even if Ramon doesn't do anything, we've given her the $20,000. Ramon doesn't do anything, we're not out the $20,000. She is. And we're just.
No, she's not out $20,000. She gets $20,000 back.
She gets $20,000 back, that she's, yeah.
But she doesn't do the work.
Correct. So unless she's friends with Ramon and split 10, you get 10, I get 10, and let's just split the scene.
We.
So I, I guess we should make a stipulation that the work, we pay as the work gets done. And that would be our, our vote, or whatever. I would think that we wouldn't release the $20,000 until there's actually work being done.
So you want to make a motion to approve the distribution following the?
Removal.
Yeah, the completion of $20,000 worth of removal.
Yes. That would be the motions.
Is there a second? You have, there's a second by Alderman Kruger.
Thank you.
Did, um.
No?
Well, I've got a motion on the floor now at this point.
I believe Alderman Kruger.
So the, the council had, we have a motion and a second right now that we would approve the distribution of the $20,000 following the completion of $20,000 of work.
Of asbestos removal.
And it would be inspected by, and nothing would happen. Yes. Can we speak on that?
Yes. So the motion on the floor, Alderman Sevenik?
The only reason I would not be in favor of that is that then nothing's going to happen anyways. What we want, because what she needs is a deposit for this guy to work, just like if you go to a lawyer or he wants, you know, some money upfront before he starts your case, or anything like that. And someone that's going to paint on your house, some people want a deposit first before they start, or whatever. So if we, and the motion isn't a bad one, but the thing is, is that's not what she's asking. She's asking, I have to pay this guy $20,000 to get the work started, okay? I understand that. My issue has been, is this a legitimate company? If it's a legitimate company, then I am okay with releasing the $20,000. But if he's not a legitimate company, then he's in trouble for other stuff himself, because now he is acting, and he's going to be in trouble with the IRS and the Wisconsin Department of Revenue.
Did, did you want to amend the motion, Stan? Or do you want to let this one fail and then do a new one?
Sure, as long as we know that it's a reputable, registered company with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue.
So you're going to amend the distribution of $20,000 after $20,000 of work is completed?
No, that, I just, no.
Okay.
You're the one suggested, and I didn't want to do that.
I understood what Stan said. She needs $20,000 to get started before he will set foot into the building. So that's what she wants the $20,000 for.
Right.
Okay, we've got people talking without mics again.
I guess we'll have to, Steve's got.
Do we, actually, Becky was there first. Did, did you want to, it sounds like we're going to vote on this and vote it down and then start over? But I don't know if you want to talk on this motion, or if you want to wait till we start a new motion.
I'll split mine into two. My comments on this motion are in agreement with Alderman Sevenik, that the $20,000 is being requested as a down payment to begin the project. And if that doesn't happen, then the asbestos removal won't happen.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment on that is, how long have they been in there? And we had an agreement with them to remove that asbestos for how long? They knew that they had to remove this asbestos as part of the agreement for that building in the first place. And then it got extended. They still didn't do it. And now they're coming up asking for money because they don't have money to do it in the first place. I, I think the city has bent over backwards for these people to sit there and try to accommodate them and, and, and get them to remove the asbestos as originally agreed to. I am not in favor of just handing over $20,000 so they could start a process that they knew damn well they were supposed to start years ago. This is, this is BS. They knew they had to get it done. We extended it, and they promised again that they were going to get it done. In fact, they sat there in front of this council one other time, and said, said, the business is going great and they're going to be doing it soon, and nothing was done. I'm not in favor of giving them $20,000 in advance. They, they, they're running a business. And if they, and if they can't plan after all these years, you know, to sit there and have this done, I don't think it's, we're underneath any obligation to front them some money, because apparently they don't have the money to do this in the first place. Because their, their job is $120,000. They're asking for $20,000. They don't even have the first $20,000 to be able to do this. How much do we have in escrow of theirs? Do we have $120,000 in escrow?
Not quite, I don't believe. A little over 100? 102.
102? So, so they're still about $20,000 short of even completing the project?
To begin with.
More than likely, there's probably going to be some asbestos left in there, if they even get it that far. I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of to keep them bending over backwards for people that showed no effort to get the stuff done by the agreement they were supposed to in the first place.
Stan?
I, I think we all agree with Alderman Kruger on that. But we could also be penal, being set up.
Yep.
Now they can say, we got a contractor, tried to do the work, city just won't release that, those funds. So I think what my suggested amendment, which would now, wait, did we vote?
We didn't use the amendment, yeah.
All right, we need to vote.
Okay. So right now, the motion that's on the floor is not that one?
No. I can get the right one here.
It's right here.
Oh, thank you. Okay, let's go to the next. Do, do you want me to leave that one up?
You might want that one, so you might want to do a different one.
Okay.
I don't know what the next one's going to be from Alderman Sevenik. There we go. So the motion on the floor right now is that the City of Manasha release a distribution of $20,000 after $20,000 of asbestos abatement is completed. And seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call on that, please? Two, three, four, one, two, three, four. Four, four. It still fails on roll call, four, four. One, two, three, oh, there is five. Okay. I'm sorry. I can't count. Yeah, hers has little numbers that say two over there. Okay. Alderman Sevenik?
All right, so the request is for Simply Incredible Business Development and Christine Sons to release 20,000 of escrow funds for abatement at 198 River Street, as long as the contract she chooses, chooses is a registered business with the Internal Revenue Service and the Department of Revenue.
Okay, before we second it, is that a valid way to?
Well, basically, it's just adding.
I just want to make sure that the city attorney is okay with, okay. Okay, so.
It's a registered business with?
With the IRS, Internal Revenue Service, and the Department of, Wisconsin Department of Revenue.
There's a motion and a second.
Oh, wait a second. John's got something here.
Alderman Langdon?
Yeah.
Director Jacobs?
I am not a tax expert, but I do own a business also. And when I got into owning businesses and stuff, like Alderman Sevenik has said, a business, a person can file as a sole proprietor on their own personal income tax return, putting DBA doing business as, you know, whatever. They do not have to be, if they, if they're a sole proprietor, they, they just work for themselves. They don't have payroll taxes and things they have to file to the Department of Revenue or to the IRS. They do have to claim that income then on their own personal tax return on a Schedule C for federal tax return, as indicating their own income on there, and they would have to pay self-employment taxes on there, which is these, both parts of Social Security and Medicare for they themselves. But they wouldn't have to be filing anything, filing another separate tax return for their business, for paying taxes. But they, should they be having a seller's permit for sales tax and stuff if they're collecting sales tax for doing, performing their services that they charge to someone else? Yes, they should. So that was the thing, I believe they should have.
I had mentioned that earlier.
Yeah, but they don't have to be filing anything with the Department of Revenue or the IRS.
Or seller's permit, I would like to add, if that's all right, as a friendly amendment to my, and that should cover it. With the Secretary of State. No, we don't need that.
Are you comfortable with that motion then? Attorney is comfortable with that motion then, and understands what it means? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm kind of in the court with Alderman Kruger here. The, the years and times that they were supposed to do something, never did it. I don't even know if they're still a company. We don't, with, with what I have experienced with them, I just don't know if I can trust it. I'm, I would not vote for any type of escrow funding to be given to them at this time. I will, we can have most creative type of seconds or motions of having this work being done. I just don't think it's going to get done. I just don't trust this. So I'm going to vote no with whatever is drafted here tonight.
Alderman Nichols was next. Oh, I'm sorry, maybe you were next, Dan, but I'll.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mayor. I will support this motion. And the memo that's in front of us that was drafted does say that the $20,000 would be released directly to the company. And now the motion states, in the event that the company is a real company. So I'm, I'm fine with that. And also provided us this evening is a signed contract between both the proprietor of the business and Ms. Zones herself, which is something that we've been waiting for for a long time. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
Ted, the only reason that Alderman Grady, excuse me, Alderman Ted Grady, and members of the body. The reason I'm suggesting this motion is, like I stated before, just in case they're saying, you know, we, we wanted to do this work, but the city won't release those funds. So at least by saying, we'll release these funds as long as this is a legitimate company, and that they're going to do the work, and that they can only receive the money, not her, but the business, I think that's an appropriate motion to move forward. So that, that, otherwise, I totally agree with what you said.
Alderman Grady?
Well, I just have, I know that she put up a couple homes, and one of the homes is in the Milwaukee area. And it just so happens that this is where the contractor for the asbestos comes from, and I don't know if that has any correlation. Just the sway, the switch and bait thing that everyone's worried about is, the money goes, this is who she picked, someone from her area of the, where she used to live. The money goes from his pocket to hers, and he does no work. So that's.
Make sure he's a legitimate developer.
Yes.
So I think Alderman Sevenik, though, makes another good point. If this is not the direction we're going to go, we need to either decide that we're going to take this on ourselves, because we can do that with the contract we have with her, or we're going to get nothing. And I think it is important that something happens. We can't just hold this money forever and, and nothing happens. So we should make that decision, that something does need to happen, whether it's this or another way to make this move forward. See, Stan, I agree with you for a change.
I knew I should have called ahead of time on this.
Any further discussion?
Are we ready? I can add that final?
Yep, and we need to add a little bit more on to that.
Okay, so this is what I have.
And it keeps going, huh?
Yeah.
I think that looks good.
And it says, yeah.
Yeah, that you had the rest on there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That looks good?
Yeah.
So can they read it wrong?
It only goes to and.
Okay, let me get the rest of it on there. I got it up here.
It doesn't let you make it longer than that?
No, well, it. Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, the, the motion, we can't make it any bigger. The request, the motion is to approve the request by Simply Incredible Business Development's LLC and Christine Zones to release $20,000 of escrow funds for asbestos abatement at 198 River Street, Manasha, as long as the contractor she chooses is a registered business with the IRS and Wisconsin Department of Revenue and has a seller's permit number. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, then could we take a roll call vote, please? Oh, there it is, up there.
That must be from the guys up there.
Motion carried on roll call 5-3.
Okay. Item J is held over businesses, business. The item is the common council minutes of August 20th is their motion. Alderman Taylor?
Motion to postpone till 10:15-18.
These were postponed from 9/4 and 9/17. Alderman Taylor is requesting to postpone them until 10:15.
Packet, so I thought I'd postpone it.
Is there a second?
Were there corrections put in the packet?
There were no corrections received from this body.
Okay, so we'll postpone it then for one more time.
But this body has to give the.
Give you?
Yeah. There were none received from this body.
All right, so what, what do you want from us?
I, I did hand some out, and I did see that there was, that she had sent the minutes, and so, again, I must have made a mistake. I wish I would have known that it wasn't received by the body, but I'll postpone till 10:15-18.
But she's saying that she needs correction.
So what, what we need is someone on the common council to say, I would like to put something in the packet that says, I would like the minutes amended to, say, X. Not just, this member of the public thinks that we should amend that. So that's what we need. We need you to submit something that says, these are the amendments I would like, and then we'll put it on the next agenda that way.
Hey, I was going to put, add my name to it last meeting, but apparently that didn't go through, so. Yeah.
Okay.
I said I'd put the last, but let's just postpone it and we'll move forward to the next.
So Alderman Sevenik and, Alderman Taylor and Alderman Sevenik made a motion to postpone. And is there further discussion? Alderman Kruger?
Yeah, can I, can I ask why these are being postponed? I mean, who?
There was some added language.
There's a member of the public that would like to add something, and Alderman Taylor would like to have them amended to reflect what the member of public thought, of the public said should be amended. And we've been waiting to get what that amendment would be.
And, and it's been postponed two times already, and still nothing's in.
Apparently there was a miscommunication. I had handed something out. I had handed something out and I said at the last meeting that my name should have been added to it. I'm sorry that the member of the public's name was on there and I handed out a sheet last week and I thought that's, that would show up in here. So.
I don't know if we all got one. I think we all got one, didn't we?
The clerk needs to have that.
Yeah, I thought I.
And you can make that motion right.
You could have just made the motion right now.
Right now, that just says, I'd like to amend the minutes to say X.
I, I don't have that with me. I thought it was going to be in the packet.
That's, that's how you would amend the minutes, though.
Fine. That's why I passed that out so everybody was clear on that.
Well, then you could have done it the last meeting.
Yeah.
When you had it here too.
But I didn't want to hand something out and hacked on it with, so, but I'd just like to have it postponed till 10:15.
You'll, you'll still have to actually read what you want changed at the next meeting.
But I didn't see it in the packet, so I wasn't going to make any waves on it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Oh, just on postponement, on the postponement, just a moment, Mayor. Let me put that up.
We could do that too, but that wasn't what the motion was.
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Okay, item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance 15. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, this one's been postponed two times. How about that?
Okay, what's your pleasure?
My, my pleasure is, is that I believe that staff has done the work to help alleviate potential hazards on the Loop de Lake route. I don't think it's completely safe. I did have conversations with Director Rodowski and along with Alderman Langdon, and we talked about still putting in the white striping lines. Rodomsky? What did I say?
Rodowski.
Oh, cool. That was the other guy I was talking to. Sorry. Should I say Director Josh like everyone else? Sorry. But I'd like to see the white lines painted. I still think that when you're coming off the trail, if you see the white lines, they call them like the Abbey Lane or Abbey Road lines, like, like Mark has, he's holding up here. I think that just, that brings so much potential safety to that intersection, then we won't have to worry about stop signs. So at this time, I'll withdraw my ordinance, oh, 15-18, for a four-way stop sign with the hopes that with the added lines that this will do the job that I believe the stop signs would have. So we don't have to act on it. I'm pulling it.
So item two is ordinance 18. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make an amendment to that.
We'd first need a motion before you can amend it.
Okay.
Wait a second. James, James wants to make an amendment to mine, which we passed.
Which?
We're on, oh, 18-18.
We're, we're on 18-18 now, so.
Yeah, that's yours, Mark.
Alderman, Alderman Langdon?
We are on number two, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
I will make the motion for zero dash 18 dash 18. It's an ordinance adding sections nine dash three dash 16, parent K and parent L of the sewer utility regulation ordinance introduced by Alderman Langdon, recommended by the Board of Public Works.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance will have a significant impact on homeowners and families in this community, and I think we can do better.
Seeing no further discussion, we could take a roll call, please.
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Item three is ordinance 19. Do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Number three is zero dash 19 dash 18, and it's an ordinance modifying section nine dash three dash 34 of the sewer utility regulation ordinance introduced by Alderman Langdon, recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item four is resolution 25. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 25-18, a resolution regarding lead and galvanized water service lateral replacement partnership introduced by myself.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
So motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Director McKinney, could you review for us and the community what this ordinance, or sorry, resolution is about and the background behind it?
Experts at the EPA and CDC agree that there is no known safe level of lead in a child's blood. And even low levels of lead in blood have been shown to affect IQ, the ability to pay attention in school, academic achievement. The effects of lead exposure can't be corrected. And the most important step we can all take is to make sure that we prevent lead exposure. So the EPA estimates that about 20% of the human exposure to lead may come from drinking water, and the majority of the sources are from paint in homes built before 1978 contaminated with soils and dusts. The Menasha Utilities was notified by the DNR that test sites exceeded the EPA lead action level. And these are known sources of lead. And as a health officer, of course, that, that bothers me. It affects me deeply. We know that there are homeowners that are required to place their portion of lead or galvanized service lines. We have that ordinance right now, but not everyone can afford to do so. And the Menasha Utilities Safe Drinking Water Program funds assist customers currently who replace lead or galvanized water services. However, that program is ending because the program was so successful, it's ending on December of this year. So in order to look at a possible way to assist homeowners with the replacement, this resolution would help us all work together, utilities, the city, and the homeowners to ensure that we have a way or a path forward for them now in the future to help pay for the replacement of lead and galvanized pipes. Some people might ask, well, why is, why are we doing that as a, maybe a measure that all of us are involved in? Why are city residents asked to pay to assist others? Well, it, it's important to know that lead toxicity impacts individuals and society. So every time you invest a dollar into preventing lead hazards, you're going to realize a return on your investment. EPA and CDC has studied this and that elevated blood lead levels reduce the present value of a child's individual future lifetime earnings by about $37,000. And they've researched it to show that every dollar we spend, like I said, has a return on investment. Seventeen to $221 would be returned in health benefits, increased IQ, higher lifetime earnings, tax revenue, reduced spending on special education, and reduced criminal activity. So it's clearly a good measure to consider. The Health Department, we remain dedicated to assisting families to identify and mitigate all potential sources of lead in an effort to prevent childhood lead poisoning. While awaiting replacement, we are very committed to making available filters for families and replacement filters. We would advise people to confirm the age of their home, and we can do that if they contact the Health Department, and I believe utilities too. And we are available for technical assistance to identify lead hazards and also to advise on reducing those hazards. So in conclusion, this would be a good measure if we could come together in partnership and assist in continuing a program.
Thank you for that. I, I do look forward to a great conversation this evening about this resolution. And I'm going to hear from, from you all before I say anything, but before I do that, I, I want to offer my sincerest thanks to the people who have worked really hard on bringing this together. I know there have been lots of discussions in the background and meetings that have come, that have happened before this point. In fact, months ago, Representative Stock in her office were really involved in getting the legislation changed so that utilities could offer a replacement program. There have been many, several meetings between myself, members from Menasha Utilities, Director McKinney, the mayor's office, and some of Director McKinney's staff as well, talking about ways to address this important public health issue in our community and from other directors as well. So thank you to everyone. And we've also had great feedback and support from community members and also community leaders in Menasha as well, including members of the school district and some nonprofit organizations.
Partnership Community Health Center.
Partnership Community Health Center. So there is a lot of support out there to address this public health issue and something we want to keep working on. And with that, I'll look forward to conversation from you.
Alderman Sevenek?
Is this dealing with just laterals? Or is this all in persons' internal homes?
This is the lateral from the curbside to the home, but not in someone's home.
Okay, thank you, because I really didn't get that reading this ordinance. I understand that our grant will be running out. There was like, I think we had two grants and it totaled about a half a million dollars, and that's drying up. Reading this ordinance, we just keep referencing the utility. There's several utilities throughout our community. So if there should be any kind of correction, it should say either the Menasha Utilities or whatever utility you're referencing. You have a, the city will contribute a third, the utility will contribute a third, which I'm assuming is the Menasha Water and Light Company.
The Menasha Water Utility.
Menasha Water Utility?
Yes.
Okay.
We can definitely update that to clarify that.
All righty. And then the other third would come from the property owner. Now, my, my question then would be is, where's the city coming up with the one-third of the money? And where's the utility coming up with one-third of the money? It doesn't address that anywhere where that money's coming from. I would agree to this if I understood that we had those grants coming back again to us, which we utilized. But without that, I don't think we can afford it. And I know we can't afford not to help our folks, but then that means we might have to cut some staff in the city somewhere. There's a good part of our budget is staff and salaries and rollups and benefits. So this council's going to have to make a tough decision unless, Mayor, you have some answers for me, because I know the utilities was looking at continuing this program. I don't know, I haven't read from their minutes if they had received any new funding sources. So I, I just lay that out there, let the rest of the council think about that, and then maybe you can answer those questions.
So right now, there are no other grant opportunities coming in from the state for the utilities. Director McKinney and I did look at some potential grant opportunities for lead abatement and cleanup, you might call it, but we do not have any specific opportunities right now. So the dollar amounts are, if you look at 10 years, we're looking at somewhere in the $44,000 range for the utilities. The way that this proposal is written, it would only be applicable on the city side for owner occupied properties. We estimate somewhere in the 60% owner occupied properties within these areas. So we would estimate somewhere around the $26,000.
So you're saying R1, only for resident?
Only for owner occupied. So if you're, if you have a rental property, you would not be eligible for a city grant. If you're, if you live in the house and the second unit that's on that lateral, then it would be owner occupied, so you would be. That's how this is written right now. That could change. If we keep it that way, that's about $26,000 for the city. That would be funded either through tax levy or through potentially our affordable housing program, but I'm not sure that we want to eat up all those affordable housing program dollars to do that. The utilities half would have to be funded through a rate increase. That would amount to a dollar plus or minus per month for an average water utility customer. So that's where those funds would come from.
How much is that again, please?
A dollar plus or minus on the utility side. The city side would range anywhere between 40,000 and 26,000, depending on how many were owner occupied or not, and if they were looked at as an, if that was looked at as a criteria. And then, of course, if other grant opportunities come in, we would backfill some of those funds with grant opportunities. So I'm Alderman Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor. When this program first came out, my biggest concern was, is that in the end, the money is going to be spent, you're going to have a whole bunch of people or a certain amount of people that got their laterals replaced pretty much for free, then everybody else is going to have to pay for it. And I had a big problem with that. I thought the utility could have equaled that out somehow and, and divided it up so more people would be covered. For some reason, there was resistance to that. So I just, I, I'm very uncomfortable with, with having a program and certain residents benefit from it and the rest of them don't. The mayor just mentioned the owner occupied only, and that caught my attention, which means that the rental units. which means that the rental units, I mean, if this is truly about the health and well-being of kids and all that, and we're automatically excluding a lot of people within the community that with kids that live in rental units, and that, I have an issue with that also.
We're not excluding the requirement to replace the lateral. We're just not providing taxpayer funds to a business.
Businesses and all that, okay, okay.
Is what this says. That doesn't mean that's what has to be passed.
Right, right. I honestly think that as far as a resolution, we could do better on this, on the wording, and a little bit more fair, and as Alderman Sevenik said, to figure out where all the, you know, how we're gonna budget this and all that, too. I mean, I would... It was suggested that possibly a joint utility commission council meeting is needed to be able to sort all this stuff out properly.
We're up to Sunday, the following week.
But I, I mean, I would actually like to make a motion to refer this resolution to a joint meeting of the common council and the utilities. And I would like to have the stipulation of this held within three weeks, so we can actually move on this in a timely manner also.
There's a motion and a second to refer this to a joint utilities common council meeting within the next three weeks. We can do whatever time you want. We can do 1:00 AM if you want. James would like that, I bet. 1:00 AM. Well, what we would be discussing right now is the postponement. Alderman Langdon? Did you want to discuss, not postpone, meant the referral? Or did you want to discuss the program?
I'm talking about that, sorry.
Actually, now we're just talking about, do we want to refer it someplace else? And then if that fails, then we can go back to the resolution. Otherwise, you can talk about your thoughts when we actually have the joint meeting. Alderman Nichols, did you want to talk about referral?
I did not. I was hoping that I could learn more about what a more fair resolution might look like.
And right now, what's on the floor is to, well, yeah, to have a joint meeting, to figure out what that is. I guess we could probably ask unanimous consent to hear other items if we want to at this point. I would think it'd probably be best to have the utility commission in the room, though, and talk about it together rather than trying to make a resolution now tonight.
Well, that's okay. What I was hoping for is to hear Alderman Langdon, what he has to say about the resolution, and to hear from other folks as well.
But the, then you'd vote down the motion to refer, and then we could continue discussing at that point, then.
Do you need unanimous consent to do that?
To vote down the resol...
No, to continue the conversation after the vote.
Well, if we can do that. Oh, no, that would just continue then, because then the motion would be on the floor. Alderman Taylor, did you want to talk about?
I just wonder why, you know, it's nice to have the two weeks in between. Why didn't the SCOT administration or Public Works?
It's a resolution. It's already been, the topic's already been on the agenda.
Well, that was back when the grants were available.
Yeah, and the reason, we put it directly on the council agenda because it's already been passed at the utility commission level. And the utility has run out of grant funding, and they would like to be able to get a program to the PSC, which takes a month or more to get approval, ninety to one-hundred-and-eighty-eight days.
Well, this is definitely on the radar of the federal government, the state government, and I'm sure that
It was.
Grant process will be revolved. Well...
If the media jumps back on it, it will be.
If you watch some of the senate or congressional hearings and stuff, it's a very popular item right now, especially with the Flint, Michigan situation, too. So I like what Alderman Kruger brought forward, and I'm gonna vote for that.
So what's on the floor right now is to refer this to a joint meeting? Is there any further discussion on that? I don't see any. Debbie's gonna put the referral up there. This is Steve's.
Refer to joint utilities and council meeting?
Within three weeks.
Within three weeks?
Yeah. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote. Did you want to talk? Too late now.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Okay, so we'll be...
Resolution. I had a question on number one. I know with Alderman Sevenik withdrew his motion on the four-way stop, but I saw Alderman Langdon hold up and direct the Public Works to paint these lines.
The Public Works director can create the crosswalks in the style that he feels is most appropriate.
Okay.
So that would be...
We didn't need a motion on that up here.
We don't need to do that.
But was there direction, was there direction given for that?
No, that would be the Public Works director's discretion to do that. We have stopped in most cases painting abbys, but he is perfectly free to do that if he sort of feels that it creates a better environment.
Okay, that's where I got goofed up. I thought there was a, that we were gonna vote down a motion to, as Alderman Langdon held up that direction. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, we got two items left. Well, three, actually. The first is an appointment of Shane Correll to the redevelopment authority. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for your appointment of Shane to the redevelopment authority of a term ten one, two thousand eighteen, to eight thirty-one of two thousand twenty-one.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tomgrotty. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comment on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing, seeing no one? Do we have a motion to adjourn? There's a motion and a second. I'm not sure who you grabbed. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.